Good evening. My name is Sidna Rashid and I will be the moderator for tonight's candidate forum for the Pooter School District Board of Education. Tonight's forum is sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Larimer County, the city of Fort Collins, and the Pooter School District. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization which has fought since 1920 to improve our system of government, to educate citizens about the issues, and to encourage them to vote. There are seven elected school board members who serve terms of four years as unpaid volunteers. Pooter School District Board of Education sets policy and governs the school district with its over 29,500 students and 3,700 employees. Their mission is to educate every child every day, and their vision is to support and inspire every child to think, to learn, to care, and to graduate prepared to be successful in a changing world. There are five seats up for election this term. District A's incumbent board member Kathy Kipp is running against Mike Prusnik. The seat for District B has one candidate Nate Donovan who is running unopposed for his first term on the board. District F has two candidates running for the term-limited Nancy Talez's seat. They are Gavin Koschinski and Rob Pedersen. Two incumbents Carolyn Reed, District E, and Susan Gatawski, District G, are running unopposed. This election is a mail ballot election. Every registered voter in the school district area will receive a ballot in the mail. School board members are elected at large, which means that you vote for all open seats, no matter where you live in the district. This election, you are able to register to vote up until Election Day at the three Voter Service and Polling Centers in Larimer County. They are the Larimer County Courthouse, the Loveham Police and Courts Building, and the Estes Park Municipal Building. We'll now turn to the candidates who have one and a half minutes to introduce themselves by answering this question: Why are you running and what skills or experience do you bring to the position? We'll start with Kathy Kipp for District A and move to the right.
Hi, my name is Kathy Kipp, and I currently serve as the Vice President of the PSD Board of Education. Thank you first of all to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum. It's really important that, I hope everybody in the community takes the opportunity to learn about the school board candidates so you can make educated voices or educated votes when it comes to this election. My background is that I have been a school district volunteer and parent since my kids were in kindergarten. I have twins, and they are seniors in high school now, so I always tell everybody I do everything once but really intensely. So that's sort of what I've been doing. I've served on a variety of school district committees over the years. I've been PTO president. I've served as Chair of the District Advisory Board. I've done all kinds of stuff. And then four years ago, I ran for the school board, and so that's where I've been for the last four years. I think the school district is in a better place than where I found it. We have a superintendent that we've hired since I've been there. That's been going quite well. We have, we've been doing lots of community engagement, which we'd like to continue if I get reelected. Also, we've been doing a lot of board advocacy on testing and reducing the testing burden and increasing funding for K through 12 education. Also, we have some new ends which are really good new goals for our students in our district that we think are a good place for our kids to be.
Thank you very much. Now we'll hear from Mike Prusnik.
Good evening. My name is Michael Prusnik, and I'm running for school board to help PSD keep up with the changing world. Some of the things I bring to the table are a lot of what I call "street smart" skills. I've spent the last 12 to 14 years with my children in the district, working through problems with the district and successfully solving them for my family. And I'd like the opportunity to help fix those underlying causes and help solve them for all children. You know, some of the issues we've run into are things like the expert staff members giving a W when they're not allowed, dropping one of my students from the GT program, trying to charge a class for a camera in violation of the policies. And I've successfully been able to work all these systems and get solutions in place. Some of the skills I bring to the table are, I have a track record of being able to come up with the right answer typically before the government organizations do. Several years ago, I came to the district showing them that TIF was a problem, and at the time, the district was very pro-TIF, and you know, it took a while for the district to come around on the TIF policy. In the city, I've had a lot of successes in things like bringing the GPS tracking on the West Nile here, doing public outreach with the stadium meetings, and most recently, I've been trying to get street legal golf carts applied. And it was three years ago I started that, and earlier this month, the city finally came around with that. And most recently with the school district, I will have to stop, I'm out of time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Nate Donovan from District B.
Good evening. My name is Nate Donovan, and I'm running for the school board.
Did you want to use your microphone?
Excuse me, we'll start again. Good evening. My name is Nate Donovan. I'm running for the Pooter School Board to be an advocate for great teaching and learning and help maintain excellence in the district. I've been a parent, am a parent, with my spouse of two sons that received an excellent education in the Pooter School District. For the past two years, I've served as a school bus driver in the district, and that's been an adventure. And I think we made a lot of progress nine months at a time with the students. And for 20 years, I served as a lawyer for individuals, businesses, and governments, including a former charter school in the Pooter School District as their attorney. And I think what I bring is ability to collaborate, build partnerships, ask the tough questions that need to be asked in a respectful manner, and look at the long-term broad view of what should the public policy be that helps translate community values into great teaching and learning, and let the staff do the job that they're trained to do and be the community's voice for maintaining excellence in the district. So I look forward to serving on the board and appreciate everyone's attendance here and listening on TV.
Thank you. Carolyn Reed for District E.
Thank you. My name is Carolyn Reed, and I'd like to take a few moments to thank the League for sponsoring this candidate's forum tonight. It's good to be able to engage with the community and appreciate it. I was born here, and except for a few years, I spent traveling with my ex. I'm a lifelong resident of Wellington. I grew up in Wellington, and I attended Wellington Schools. I graduated from Pooter School District in 19, or from Pooter High School in 1978. I have three children, I have three stepchildren, and all of them attended PSD schools. And I've always been grateful for the great teachers that my children had, and I'm also grateful for the great teachers that I had when I was growing up. In fact, I've stayed in contact with my favorite teacher from junior high, Mrs. Carlson. She gave me a lifelong love for learning, but more importantly, she made me feel valued. When my daughter started first grade at Beatty Elementary, she was identified as having a speech and language development disability. The staff at Beatty were great at developing her IEP and including me in that process. Through several years of support, they caught her up with her peers. And fast forward today, my daughter now speaks two languages, and what was once her deficit is now her strength. She is acquiring a certification to do interpreting for the courts. And what happened, the support she received when she went to school probably changed her life. And I feel very passionately that every child, given that same support, will have also have great success.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Now District F, Mr. Koschinski.
Thank you. Just call me Gavin if you want. Koschinski's pretty hard. I have two reasons why I am running. They are my seven-year-old daughter Tessa and my 11-year-old son Nathan. They have both been in Pooter School District for their entire formal education since preschool, the same preschool where my wife is currently working as an early childhood educator. I have volunteered in their classrooms and with the district for that entire time, for eight years. And we love our school system, but I've got some concerns. One of them is next year will be the first time that our school district does not have a parent on the school board. Let me repeat that. For the first time in at least three decades, next year will be the first time when the entire school board does not have a single person on it with a child in schools. And so I would like to be the voice for those parents and for those students. In addition, I am a finance professional with an MBA. I'm currently the Director of Finance for one of the largest independent medical practices in the state, and I think the board needs a voice of finance, a finance professional, someone with some finance expertise on the board to help with some of the serious financial issues that our state and our district faces. So we love our community. I also served on the Fort Collins Housing Authority Board for six years, helping with affordable housing, and we love our community and just want to try to help make it a little bit better.
Thank you. Mr. Pedersen.
Thanks very much. Hi, I'm Rob Pedersen, and I'm running to serve on the school board because I have a passion to ensure that every student has the opportunity to reach his or her full potential and to graduate to a successful life and career. So why do I have that passion? Well, first of all, I have two sons who have gone through all three levels of the Pooter School District. And so I know something about what it means to be a parent in the school district, and I'm profoundly grateful for the education that they've received. My wife is a teacher. She happens to teach at Ridgefield Classical School, so I know something about the charter school environment, even though both of my sons have been to traditional PSD schools. I've also volunteered for 13 years in the district. In the classroom, I've been a substitute teacher. I've been an extracurricular Spanish teacher. I've created graduation videos and more. At the school level, I've been on school accountability committees. I've been a music parent, volunteer coordinator, and more. And at the district level, I've actively participated in more than 18 different committees, including Human Resources and Hiring, Boundary, Technology, Curriculum, Textbook Adoption, the Parent District Advisory Board, Teaching and Learning Framework, the 2010 Mill and Bond, and most recently, the Community Facilities Advisory Committee. Through those experiences, I've learned an awful lot about what it means to run a district like this, and I've learned about the wide variety of students that we have in the district and their wide variety of needs. And I want to continue to serve those needs by serving the community on the Board of Education. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Ms. Gatawski?
And you can call me Susan if you want to. Or you can call me Mrs. G. That's what the kids used to call me. My name is Susan Gatawski, and we've lived here for 36 wonderful years. We've lived in the community. We came here, my husband and I, came here when our kids were very small, and they went through the Pooter School District. They happen to take the little Riffenberg lecher for Collins High School track and are now enjoying very fulfilling careers as a result of the wonderful things that PSD did for them. During that time, I taught school. I'm 34-years, 34-year veteran, classroom teacher, high school, middle school, and so that definitely kept me busy. At the time that I retired, though, there was a huge gap in my life, and I couldn't quite place what it was, and it was the fact that I wasn't with kids. And so I ran for the school, well, I subbed for a few years, and then ran for the school board. And it has been the most rewarding volunteer job that anybody could ever have, I have to tell you, because it connects me with kids, but it also enables me to be and work with a wonderful board currently. That connection between the community and the district, and to listen to the community and to work with the district for the betterment of the education of our kids, because we are in fact in charge of enabling them to be positive workforce members, whether it be by way of college or immediately entering the workforce. So the rewards have been tremendous. I have already served four years on the board. It's been incredibly fun, and I seek to do that again. And I also bring with me that K through 12 education, that education experience. So I look forward to that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, now we're going to start the questions, and we're going to start with Mr. Donovan. And the first question is about the budget. In deciding district budget priorities, what issues are most important? And if you need me to repeat the question, please let me know, because there's seven of you that will be answering.
I support the current district budget priorities that are reflected in the current year budget. I think that as we grow as a district, it's important to keep in mind attracting, retaining, and rewarding staff members that do the work, the day-to-day work of educating our children. And I say "our children" because I view all 30,000 of the students in the Pooter School District as our community's children. And I think that it's going to take a lot of tough decisions to be made as we talk about going to the voters for millions of dollars in bond issues to build new schools, and we're going to have to have a frank conversation with the community about the cost of public education and how we maintain excellence in the district.
Okay, thank you. We'll go on to Carolyn Reed.
I think that the district has done a very good job of allocating limited funds equitably right now, and so I would recommend that we stay on the course that we're on. We've been able to provide a wide variety of programs for kids without sacrificing too many programs. But my personal passion is early childhood education, and I am a firm believer that for every dollar that we will put into early childhood education, that will come back to a sevenfold as kids get older. So I would like to see more money spent on early childhood education.
Thank you. We'll go to Mr. Pedersen, please.
Yes, hi. So I support what Carolyn and Nate were saying, so I won't repeat it, but I do want to say a few other things. First of all, we have a very transparent process in the district to identify and enable budget priorities, and I think that process is a good one. I also am very pleased to see that we have been able to increase funding to students over the past years. Part of that is made possible by the generous support of taxpayers through the Mill Levy, and the district appreciates that very much. In terms of personal priorities, I'd like to make sure that there's enough money for professional development for teachers, particularly in the areas of differentiation. I'd also like to ensure that we have enough money in the schools for hands-on learning, which I think is important. And I'd like to ensure also that we have a good support for mental health, which has been a challenge in the district with some of the recent suicides and the like, and we need not to let that happen.
Okay, thank you. We'll go to Mr. Koschinski, please.
I think these are all great points, and I wouldn't disagree with any of them, but I do think this is an area where strong finance leadership is needed on the school board, because our schools need more funding. That would be my top priority, is to increase the amount of money that is going to our schools. If you look at the Pooter School District, only a third of the funds are going to direct instruction today. And if you compare that to some of our neighboring school districts and some school districts of the same size in Colorado, that is well below where it should be. And so I would like to help bring the leadership to the school board to help address that, because a 1% change in funding to schools is $3 million in PSD, or about $60,000 per school. And I think if you ask any principal if they could use an extra $60,000, a minor change like that, they would jump at the opportunity.
Thank you. Now we go to Susan Gatawski.
There's a tremendous amount of effort that goes into determining what the priorities of the district are. A lot of input from the schools, a tremendous amount of time finding out what it is that the community feels that we need, that the schools feel that we need, so that our priorities reflect the values of the community. I think that if we keep our ends in mind, in other words, our four goals, if we keep those in mind and they're aligned with the priorities, with our priorities, that we can't go wrong. The second thing I think that's vital is that always, always have the mantra that we're doing what's best for kids.
Thank you very much. Mr. Prusnik.
One of the things that we're doing really well at is on our finances. If you pull up the budgets that are online that go back to 2010, you'll see that our per-student revenues have been exceeding inflation while our reserves have been growing. And so from a maintaining what we have perspective, we're doing a really good job. Some of our priorities need to be looking at providing expanded service and where to get that funding from. You know, we've had a few issues over the year, and I'm going to call a lot of them on the state, where they've taken our negative factor money, there's a Tabor refund issue, and things like that, where we really need to put pressure on the state to adequately fund us. And growth is an issue we're going to have to deal with, how to fund growth from us or from the growth itself. And I'm a big fan of the early childhood education. One of the things my wife regrets is that she speaks three languages and she never taught our children when they were young. And if we're going to offer full-day kindergarten, I think we need to look at how to provide better funding for that. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Kipp.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I think the place that the district, the Board of Education is involved is we set the goals for the district in something called our district ends. Those are our goals for what we want to see in our students, and we've done a good job of that. I don't want to spend a lot of time on that, because there's a lot of other stuff here that I think I would like to respond to, frankly, because 92% of the school district's per pupil funding is spent to directly benefit students. So I don't, for what's been stated here previously, that's not accurate. We have very good processes in our district where stakeholders from our community, our parents and educators, come together and put down what their priorities are, and in line with those district ends, come together to determine the best way to spend the money in the district. So I really do think that we have a pretty good process in place. That doesn't mean there's not room for improvement, but we always strive to improve.
Thank you. The second question, we're going to stay on the money issue, and this is from a high school student in the audience, and he or she would like to know, do you support Proposition BB, which I believe is the tax collected on the sale of marijuana? If so, what would you do with the $40 million in our school system? Where would you use it? So it's two-tiered. Do you support BB? And if you do, where do you see that money being spent best? So we'll start with Carolyn Reed.
Okay, thank you. The $40 million in tax revenue from marijuana is meant to support schools with critical needs. And currently, we do not have in Pooter School District any critical needs that would make us eligible for those funds. So for instance, we have schools, some small school districts who have, need heat. We have some schools that don't have safe water to drink, and we have schools with leaking roofs, and those are the schools that will be the recipients of that money.
So do you support the Proposition BB?
I do.
Okay. So we will move on to Mr. Koschinski, please.
I think personally, I'll be voting for Proposition BB, because it's such a small amount of money for my household that it would be easy to relinquish $20 or whatever, but I wouldn't necessarily tell the community that they should follow my lead. There are families in Fort Collins and in Wellington and in Redfeather that are struggling, and if $20 means something to them, then I would let them make that decision on their own. If it does pass and the money were available, I would start with safe routes to schools. There are some schools in our community where the children cannot bike or walk safely to their neighborhood school, and so I think that would be a very appropriate use of money. Think of Lincoln Middle School up on the north end, where children risk their lives walking on the shoulder of vines, so that's where I would use it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Pedersen?
Yes, my understanding of Proposition BB is that it's an initiative to keep the additional revenue associated with marijuana tax rather than refunded to the voters. If that understanding is correct, then I definitely support it, and I would look to use the funding in the ways I described earlier. I would ensure, like I said, that there's sufficient professional development. At the moment, there's about $900,000 in professional development, which sounds like a lot, but it's out of about a $250 million budget. In addition, I talked earlier about the need for ensuring that there's sufficient mental health support for the students and that there's appropriate funds for hands-on learning, which I think will benefit all students and particularly those students who learn best by using their hands rather than by reading a book or listening to a lecture.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Gatawski? Mrs. G?
Mrs. G, there you go. That'll work. As Rob said, if the money is allocated that way, I would definitely support it. I still go back to the fact that, and it's hard sometimes for a prosperous community like ours to understand that there are so many rural schools. Out of the 178 districts that exist, the vast majority of them are rural. And so initially, that money was intended to be applied to those schools with the greatest needs. We happen to be very fortunate and supported by our community, and so, you know, it's kind of a toss-up there in terms of where it would go. But if we got that money, if I had a pie-in-the-sky dream and we could use it, I definitely would put it toward physical education, mental health, and nutrition, because those are the things that I am passionate about. And also putting it toward authentic experiences that the kids could use or could have in order to make them workforce-ready. I'd love to pinpoint that as a use for that cash.
Thank you. Mrs. Kipp?
I believe that the reason the voters decided to legalize marijuana was so that the tax revenue would be used. And I believe that many people believed that that money would be used for education. Unfortunately, I do believe that the voters were misled. Only a very small amount of that money is intended to be used in any way for education, and that is only for, as my fellow school board members have said, facilities with critical needs. So there are, we have about, we have over 29,000 students in our school district. There are school districts in our state with as few as around 50 children in the entire district. We're not talking one grade level, the entire district. The needs are many in these districts, especially since our school funding has been cut. We do need to continue advocating for new and fresh funding for education. Unfortunately, our district will not qualify for this money.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Prusnik?
I haven't read all the details on BB right now, and so I'm currently undecided. I struggle with the need of the schools who have the critical issues, but I also look at a philosophical viewpoint here, which is, as I alluded to earlier, the state legislature has already taken our negative factor money. They're taking our Tabor refund money. The cities have taken some of our TIF money. And when the voters passed the marijuana laws and they passed the Tabor laws, they passed it with the intent that excess revenue would be refunded to the people. And so I'm not sure that I'm comfortable continuing this policy of helping the legislator take money from other sources. And, but if we did get money, what would I do with extra money? I think one of the things I would do is help the schools that get less donations. I would use that to help them get equal on the donations, because we have a lot of lower-income schools that aren't getting the same donations as the higher-income schools, and I'd use it as a leveling factor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Donovan?
Yes, I support Proposition BB, and I think it was yesterday or the day before, in our mailbox, I received the Blue Book, and so look for that. It's a pretty quick read, and that helps to inform us on what BB is about. If I recall correctly, if the refunds were issued, it would mean a refund of $8 per taxpayer in a refund. I agree with what's been said about other school districts with more critical needs. If money were applied for for Pooter School District and came to the district, I would support that money going to transitioning to full-day kindergarten for all students.
Thank you very much. This will be the last This will be the last question on money. Well, maybe not. It depends on what happens. Okay. Have you received campaign donations from individuals or entities from outside of Pooter School District? And we will start with Mr. Pedersen.
Yes, my father gave me a contribution. And a person who works with me at Ula Packard in California gave me a contribution. Other than that, I believe that every contribution I have received has been from within Pooter School District.
Thank you. Ms. Gatawski? Oh, no, I'm sorry, Mr. Kishinsky. I'm sorry.
That's all right. I forgot how to, I'll just answer. No, I have not, I'm sorry. No, I have not received money from any entities at all. It's all been individual, it's a grassroots campaign. Yes, I have received money from outside of Pooter School District, just like Rob, not his father, but my father, who's back in Texas. And I have friends and family all over Colorado and Texas. And so outside of PSD, yes, but from any entity of any sort, it's all, none of it is. I haven't received any of my campaign contributions from any entity. It's all been from individuals, mostly friends and family, neighbors, people I work with, and people who live in the neighborhood and who I have over for barbecues.
Thank you. Ms. Gatawski?
My family in California were very sweet, and they sent me money. Aside from that, it's been money from local sources.
I think, let me see who goes now. No, Mr. Prusnik.
I have not received any outside funding. I am intentionally running my campaign solely on ninety-nine dollars of my own funds. I want to make a statement about money in politics and special interests in politics, and I want to do that on purpose. I've received several in-kind donations. I can't remember the one of them, but one of them was the Pooter School District sponsored all of us going to the CASB, Colorado Association of School Board Meeting. And, but that was about it. The disclosures are coming out about October fifteenth, so they'll all be there for you to look at. And yeah, that's about all I have on this one. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Kip?
I am fortunate that my family loves me. My mom, my dad, my sister, my sister-in-law. Those are my out-of-state, out-of-district contributions.
Thank you. Mr. Donovan?
Yes, I've received contributions from my sister, my brother, my parents. This is like a broken record. A professor from college who lives in Idaho, some friends from a leadership program that I participated in in two thousand that live in the Denver metro area, and former colleagues in Lincoln, Nebraska, when I worked as a committee counsel in the state legislature.
Okay, thank you. Carolyn Reed?
Thank you. I have not received any donations from entities. And mostly, all of my donations are from friends and family and almost entirely from inside the district. I would say without, maybe two came from outside the district. But all from inside the district and friends and family.
Okay, thank you very much. We will move on to a school question about schools. Explain what you see as the purpose of charter schools. And we are going to start with Mrs. Gatawski.
Oh, thank you. Give me some. Charter schools, as we know, are mandated by state law. And so in that sense, I'm fully supportive of them, but for other reasons. We are a state of choice, we are a district of choice. And sometimes there comes a time, even though our schools are incredibly good in every way, and I believe that every school can offer any child an excellent education, parents perceive other needs and will choose a charter school to meet those needs. We have several charter schools in our district that we have authorized or chartered because we feel that they offer a unique opportunity to our children and therefore should exist within Pooter School District.
Thank you very much. We'll go to Kathy Kip.
Thank you. I think charter schools is something that a lot of people get very confused about. So just a quick tutorial. Charter schools are public schools. Our choice schools in our district are public schools. Our neighborhood schools are also public schools, and they all receive funding. The primary difference between charter schools and the schools that are overseen more directly by the district, which would be our choice, and our neighborhood schools is that those schools really have their own governance. Primarily, the reason that we might have a charter school is to offer a form of curriculum or programming that's not offered elsewhere in the district. Our two most recent charter schools that were approved in our district are a Waldorf School and a Montessori School. So those are programs that we don't offer elsewhere in the district and now are offered as public schools to give families increased choice.
Thank you. Mr. Prusnik?
The way I view charter schools is they do a great job executing, executing, educating our students. The last statistics I saw said thirteen of the top twenty schools in the state, between middle and high school, were charter schools. And what I really look at as a position of the board member is those schools are outside our jurisdiction. And I ask myself the question, "Why are only seven of the top twenty traditional school systems?" And I like charter schools, I support charter schools, but more importantly, I support trying to understand why they are outperforming the traditional schools and bring that success into the charter, into the traditional school. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Donovan?
Yes, I would say that charter schools provide a choice. They're authorized by state law. They're one of many choices in the district. And I would differ with Mr. Prusnik that the district-chartered schools in the Pooter School District are outside of our jurisdiction. They receive public money. They have to follow state standards. We have communication, and I think it's important for the Pooter School District to maintain good working relationships with those district-chartered charter schools. That's in contrast to charter schools that go to the State Charter Institute to get chartered, and we have no relationship with them. So I would advocate that we maintain good working relationships with our district-chartered schools and treat them, as we treat many other programs within the district, as an alternative for students and families.
Thank you. Carolyn Reed?
Yes, I do support charter schools. I think that parent-supported charter schools can provide choice for our families and our students. And as Kathy said, we have, this last year, a couple of years, we approved a couple of different charter schools, the Montessori and the Waldorf. And I had an opportunity to visit the Waldorf School this, not the Waldorf School, but the Montessori School this last year. And I think that they play a very pivotal role in providing choice. So I will, I would continue to support that choice.
Thank you. Mr. Kishinsky?
Mr. K. I like that.
Kishinsky.
I think charter schools are one of the wonderful choices that our students and parents in Pooter School District have. Thirty percent of the students in PSD choice. And our charter schools can be a great example and provide some wonderful learning opportunities, alternative learning opportunities for some of those students. And so where I would focus my efforts as a board member, PSD is one of only nine out of a hundred and seventy-eight districts in the state that has lost its exclusive charter authority. And so I think it's important that PSD regain that. And I would work with the board and with the district to try to reassert our exclusive charter authority.
Mr. Pedersen?
Yes, so a couple of things. I agree with Gavin about regaining the exclusive charter authority. I think that's important. Generally, I do support parent- and teacher-led charter schools. I have no particular agenda to increase their number or decrease their number. I think they provide an excellent choice for parents and students to find the right match for their students' educational opportunities. That's really what it's about. It's about finding where the student will be able to grow and thrive best. I think that the district, the Board of Education, should learn from charter applications, understand why a group of parents wants to start a charter, and learn why we don't offer that already in the district. And if there's a good reason why not to offer it, well, that's fine, but we at least ought to learn from it. I also think that, as Nate was saying, that we ought to have excellent relations with the charter schools. We ought to be learning from each other. They're not, they're not the same populations, they're not the same conditions, but to the extent we can learn from each other and help each other grow, I think that's an important and useful thing.
Thank you very much. So this is also a related question. What is your position on school vouchers? So we'll start with Mr. Prusnik.
Well, my understanding of school vouchers are they allow parents to essentially take a certain amount of money and use it to go to a private school. And in theory, I'm very supportive of that. Of course, it's going to depend on the exact facts. I like giving people choices. And whether that choice is a charter school, an option school, a magnet school, a traditional neighborhood school, or using that voucher to take it to a school that provides services for them, I'm very supportive of that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Kathy Kip?
I believe public money belongs in public schools, and I oppose school vouchers.
Thank you. Nate Donovan?
Yes, I agree with Kathy that public money belongs in public schools. And I do not think vouchers are something that we need to be talking about. I think that if we end up having a system of vouchers that's authorized by state law, that will be the beginning of the end of quality public education. And I do not support that.
Thank you. Carolyn Reed?
I believe that public money should be used for public education. So I do not support the use of vouchers for private schools. I believe that public schools are accountable to the taxpayers. And when we take public money and we give it to private schools, they're not accountable to the public, and so I would not support that.
Mr. Pedersen?
Yes, I agree with what Nate, Carolyn, and Kathy said. I do not support the use of public money in private schools. I believe that if we did institute a voucher program, as is traditionally understood, we would actually be increasing the opportunity gaps for our students who are currently struggling. So I do not support the use of vouchers.
Mrs. Gatawski?
I'm sorry?
Oh, I'm sorry. I keep, I'm sorry. Mr. Kishinsky?
Yeah. What I've learned about school vouchers, it's typically used in a turnaround situation. I think in PSD, we have a wonderful school system. I don't see the need to introduce school vouchers here. And if there's a movement to introduce school vouchers in PSD, I'm not aware of it, and I would not support it. And one of the main reasons is not because of what you've heard, although I think that's partly true. It's mostly because I think it hurts private schools. We've seen examples of private schools where public money is used in the form of a voucher that then is sort of the nose of the camel getting under the tent, and it opens up a whole system of regulations that private schools really didn't have to adhere to before that time. And so I think that's why school vouchers are, private school vouchers are not helpful for the private schools that they're intended to help.
Thank you. Now, Mrs. Gatawski?
It's all right. I agree with several of my colleagues. I believe that public money should go to public schools. Goes a little bit deeper than that because I think, you know, charter schools are partially funded by public money, but it's because they're partially accountable to the state for certain mandates, certain regulations and such. Parochial in private schools are not accountable in any way to any federal or state regulations. And so I think it is about accountability. And since public schools are accountable in so many ways, then the public money should stay with the public schools.
Thank you very much. Okay, now we go on to question six. And the first person I'll be asking this to is Mr. Donovan. "My kids are grown, and my grandkids don't go to school here. Give me one good reason why I should care about who gets elected to the school board." There are probably a lot of people in the audience that...
Well, I'll offer two good reasons. As I said before, I believe that all of the students educated in the Pooter School District are our community's children. We're all responsible to see that they get a quality public education. I believe that the tax money that we pay to educate our students is one of the prices for a civil society. And I think we all have a responsibility to contribute. Whether or not we have children or grandchildren in the Pooter School District, we still have that responsibility, just like having the responsibility for a transportation system or a nice place to live. There are things that government provides that private individuals and businesses can't or won't provide, and public education is one of those things.
Thank you. Mrs. Reed?
Thank you. I guess this is something that I never gave much thought to, whether or not school board elections mattered. And I'm guilty probably as anybody out there for not paying attention to school board elections. When I was appointed to the school board, I was asked by a friend if I would do it. And so I had to really start thinking about what that meant and what was expected from me and what kind of impact that would have on students and on families. And it's pretty monumental because when you think about it, we're molding the future workers, we're molding our future citizens. And the school board does have a big impact on how they're going to be molded and how they're going to turn out. So I think that they matter to us because it matters that we have an educated electorate and that we have educated workers.
Thank you. Mr. Kishinsky?
There are two reasons why I would admonish this person to pay attention to the school board. One is, schools are a reflection of the community. And I'll say again, if our school board next year does not have a single person on it who has a child in PSD, I think that is a poor reflection on our community. And I'm sorry, I want to ask, did this person say if they were a taxpayer or not?
They didn't, no.
Okay, well, let's assume that they are. There's another great reason that this person should matter because the Pooter School District's budget this year was three-hundred-million dollars. That is an enormous amount of money, and it needs to be properly stewarded. These are public resources, and they need to be taken care of properly.
Thank you. Mr. Pedersen?
Yeah, I have a few things to say. I agree that well-educated, well-rounded students are the future of our democracy. And so we need to ensure that those students are well-educated and graduate. In addition, as Carolyn pointed out, they're our future workers. So we all have an economic interest in ensuring that we have well-educated workers for the success of our society. I have been walking door-to-door, as you can imagine, and some people I've met have said, "Oh, I don't have any kids in the district." And I always say to them, "But you're a taxpayer, aren't you? You want to make sure that the district is stewarding your funds well." And so I believe that's another thing. And as far as the school board election, as opposed to the school district as a general entity, right? We've seen other districts in Colorado, like Thompson, Jeffco, and Douglas, go into quite difficult times because of changes in their school board. So you should, in my view, each of us should always be looking out for the best candidate for all of the school board seats so we can ensure that we continue to have a successful school district. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Gatawski?
I always believed that a prosperous community is the result of excellent schools, whether it be the businesses that are drawn to the community, whether it be the homes that are sold because of people coming into the community. Prosperous communities benefit from well-educated kids. Your school board is going to be the one that's going to guide that and going to enable the kids to get the best education possible. The other thing too is that the comment comes up that, you know, if you don't have anybody in the schools, why pay taxes? And for that very same reason. One last thing I would mention is that good students also get scholarships. And at the end of the year, they offer scholarships from a variety of universities in the nation to the tune of millions. nation to the tune of millions of dollars. And I'm thinking if that money is going into the pockets of parents to spend on college, then they can spend the rest of the money here.
Thank you. Kathy Kip.
Strong schools make a stronger community, period. That's just the way it is. Seventy percent of our taxpayers do not have children in our schools, but they may have grandchildren in our schools, they may have any number of relatives or people they know who have children in their schools. Susan's right. They are a strong economic driver for our community. If you do not have well-educated schools, good schools and well-educated kids, your community will suffer. It will suffer economically, you don't have kids to grow up and fill the positions. It will also suffer because you don't have kids growing up to become taxpaying citizens to pay their share of the way in the world. And that's what we all want. Furthermore, third grade reading proficiency rates have been linked to future prison rates, which means that it's a lot cheaper to educate kids than to incarcerate them.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Prusnik.
Yeah, there are a number of reasons for non-parents to be concerned about the school board elections. We have a lot of control of things that happen in your neighborhoods. We can, can, our policies will impact traffic in your neighborhood, the time of the traffic, noise that's in your neighborhood, the time of those noises, what happens with fundraisers and sporting events in your neighborhoods. And from the education point of view, you can also impact school policy. One of the things the school district is, well, corporations have, over the last five or so years, said they want more soft skills, more leadership skills, more public speaking skills, more work habit skills. And the district policy right now is actually going the opposite direction. And so by putting somebody on the school board who recognizes that, you can create students that are being trained for the workforce, that your company and your coworkers and so forth. And, and safe routes for schools, everyone benefits from that. And so it's good to care about who's on the school board for many reasons. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question, we'll go first to Carolyn Reed. What is your position on pay for performance in the context of teacher salaries?
I think that pay per performance is a very kind of slippery slope. It's, it's hard to measure. And so if we're using a test, for instance, to measure how well a teacher's performing by testing students, we can get kind of a perverse result, which is we have teachers who are concentrating on teaching kids to a test. So I think that it's kind of the devil's in the detail. How do we tell if a teacher's performing well or not? And I think a good measure of how well a teacher's performing is his or her educational level, his or her certifications or extra training that she is, he or she has done, and the time that they have spent teaching. So I would give more weight to those things when looking at performance instead of looking at test scores. I'm not saying that test scores don't have a place in that evaluation, but it should be a, a small part. And a bigger part should be educational level, time, and, I'm sorry, I can't remember what the other thing was, but I, I think that testing should be a small part of it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Pedersen.
Yes, I, I come from a business background and we do pay for performance at Ula Packard. And so conceptually, it sounds like a good idea to me. But frankly, all of my experience in the school district has taught me to be cautious about automatically taking something that sounds good in a business environment. And oh, by the way, there are some people who don't think it's so good in a business environment either. But anyway, taking something from a business environment and applying it directly to a, a school environment. So I'm not in favor of a pay for performance plan at this point. I think that there's no real good way to measure it, frankly, as, as some of my colleagues were talking about, and certainly not with the current set of tests. Those tests are new and you certainly don't want to be using something new like that to be, to be measuring something so important, right? Whatever we would do in terms of changes to our performance or pay systems should be negotiated with our teachers association in cooperation. So again, let me be clear, I don't support pay for performance at this time and that's, and, and I, we would, any changes would be negotiated with the union.
Mr. Kosinski.
The, my children's teachers who I've talked to about this want to be held accountable. They ask for that because they know that they're doing a good job and I think our teachers in PSD are fantastic. But the pay for, pay for performance as it's currently constructed, I don't think is the right way to hold them accountable. SB 191, which sort of introduced the accountability into, in Colorado, has some serious problems. I think Carolyn is exactly right. The tests that are used to measure teachers' performance are not good. I'm trying to be nice to the tests. So I, I, and I think that is the slippery slope that Carolyn was talking about. Teachers will teach to the test, especially when 50% of their performance is determined by student growth. That is a obscene, obscenely high number and anyone who's been in private industry, I think, would realize that that's just, that, that's not right.
Thank you. Susan Gatawski.
Here's where I can fall back on my experience as a classroom teacher. And I think teachers are inherently collaborative beings. We share, we work together, we always strive to create the best for our kids. And pay performance can become divisive and it can pit teacher against teacher to the point where they don't share anymore. And it's, there are multiple models, there's, there's a lot involved in creating such a paradigm shift. What I would recommend, what I would put forth is perhaps rewarding exemplary performance by schools. So that what you do is you create a sense of team within a school and reward the school for, for their exemplary performance. But I think as individuals, it's, it's probably, it's not going to work nearly as well.
Thank you. Mr. Prusnik.
I'm 100% opposed to every pay for performance model I've seen. They suffer from a number of design flaws. Particularly, you know, if you have a, a teacher whose student goes from a D-plus to a D-minus, but that teacher saves that kid from dropping out, that's a huge benefit to that student and to the community, but pay for performance models don't account for that in any way. But more importantly is, what happens when you get to the end of the year and you realize a teacher underperformed and didn't educate the students? What do you do with those students? Do you hold them back? Do you send them ahead with gaps in their knowledge? Mandatory summer school at parent expense? They're all lose-lose situations when you look at this. And for me, I'm more interested in focusing on how do we change the teaching model so that students cannot fail our students, or, or so teachers don't fail our students. Competency-based education and flip school models that are popular are addressing some of those issues. And there's a number of things that can help. If you look at, for example, Costco has three checkers to make sure you don't get out of the store incomplete and models like this can help us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Kathy Kip.
Thank you. First of all, on the testing piece, the student growth 50%, our, our board has recently, are, we're putting forth a resolution to the School Board Association asking that this be a matter of local control. If you, you, the district should be able to choose how much student growth is used. Another thing is Senator Bacon, when he was on the Senate Education Committee and wrote the Educator Effectiveness Act, was very clear in that there are multiple measures allowed to be used. So it's not necessarily just one test. It depends on how your district implements the, the Educator Effectiveness Act and evaluates its teachers. One more thing is that, you know, the issue with districts that are doing it right now, pay for performance, is primarily that they have not given it enough time and have not, they don't have a good system and that's why there's all the kickback from the teachers.
Mr. Donovan.
I do not support pay for performance as a method of compensation for teachers. I support the concept of a person's level of education that they've attained, the years teaching and the years teaching in Pooter School District as a measure for compensation. And I would like to address how compensation for all district employees is arrived at. There's a negotiation process that, that starts at the beginning of every school year and ends at the end of the school year. And it involves the teachers, the classified employees like bus drivers, cafeteria workers, and the administration that negotiates on behalf of the school board. And we have had a very good system of negotiating compensation and an employee agreement. And we just have to look 10 miles south of here to see where that process is broken down.
Thank you very much. Now, this is question eight and we're going to start with Mr. Kosinski. I'm going to try to combine two questions. Does PSD spend too much or not enough time emphasizing the importance of preparing students for college? And on the flip side, should PSD work on preparing graduates for direct entry into the labor force? Or in other words, you know, start a vocational program, I guess?
Sort of two sides of the same coin. Yeah, I get it. I understand.
Are they, are you focused too much on college and not, and you don't have enough opportunities for vocational education, for direct entry into the, the workforce?
If, if I don't answer the question fully, stop me. I'll, but I think I understand. No, I don't think PSD spends too much time encouraging children to go to college. I think the school district is doing a very good job of introducing alternative plans to our students. I know board members, I know Carolyn Reed and I have had conversations about this. She's a big believer in it and I think it's the right thing to do for our students. The flip side, are we doing enough to introduce vocational opportunities? I always think there's room for improvement. I think PSD is doing a good job and one of the best districts in the state, but I think we can admit to ourselves that we can do better. And there are, I think of the healthcare profession, medical assistants, we cannot find enough. This, this northern Colorado with this health, healthcare industry booming needs medical assistance by the hundreds and there just aren't enough mechanics, welders, there's all sorts of opportunities. The brewery industry, maybe we don't want to encourage our kids to go into beer making, but anyways.
I think the time's up. Thank you. Mr. Pedersen.
Yes, I, I believe that we, the question creates a dichotomy that I don't think is necessarily entirely true. I believe that many of the skills that are necessary for succeeding in college are also skills that are necessary for succeeding in the workplace. So encouraging students to master those skills and those work habits is really important and it's good for both tracks, if you want to call it that, although we don't want to track our students. I believe that we can do more to allow students to understand the opportunities around vocational training. You know, the pay for some of those things is quite, quite high and people can make a good living in them if they're well-trained. So I think that those are, I think that's something we should do more of. The district has started that, those kind of things with career clusters and with the individual career and academic plan that they'll be working with students on, and I think those are good tools.
Thank you very much. Susan Gatawski.
That's pretty much what we have been working on this past year. It's a great question because what it did, asking that question led to our development of our four new goals. And one of those, the first goal is to create that solid foundation for kids, because I agree with Rob that, that you have to start with that for certain. But then it goes into our second goal, which is success in a changing world. And that's where we begin to look at students and what their interests are and are they college-bound or would they like to participate in, in the workforce? That's where our work is, starts actually, is to give them those, identify first what their passions are, what their interests are, and to give them those authentic experiences so that we prepare them to enter the world of, of work. I talked to a, a teacher, an ACE director, she works with, with students and working in the workplace, and she said that the worst thing that happens, the most tragic thing is when her kids come back and say they got a great job in the fast food industry. And she says, that's got to change. We need to have them enter workforce-ready in a career path.
Thank you very much. And we go to Kathy Kip.
Thank you. One thing we heard very loudly from our community when we went out to get input on what people in our community thought they wanted to see ultimately from, from our students was that, I think somebody said it, we want the district to bless the kids who are going to go not onto college too, that, that are going to enter a career path immediately, no matter what that might be. So our district ends are very specific because we want kids to always have options. We want all children to be both college and career ready. I think this is very important. The voc, the, we are doing some right now, we need to do more. We, you never are at that endpoint. One interesting event Carolyn and I attended this last year was the non-college fair at Fort Collins High School where they had all kinds of trades and military and so forth options that kids could come and check out. So yes, support both.
Thank you. Mr. Prusnik.
Yeah, I don't think there's anything wrong with over-preparing kids for college who are ready to go there. But in, you know, talking especially to my daughter who's already graduated and her friends and so forth, because my youngest daughter hasn't quite gotten into that discussion of the future yet. But there was this feeling going around that, you know, if you weren't going to a four-year college, you were kind of a second-class citizen in the school district. And I think that's really the biggest thing that we need to work on is not, you know, you know, labeling people and really emphasize that there are many valid career paths out there, there's many valid things you can do, and really focus on making sure that all of our students understand that there's a place for them in our society and our job is to help them find that place. Thank you.
Mr. Donovan.
I agree with Mr. Pedersen that I think it's a choice that we, it's not an either-or. I think that part of our responsibility as a public, as a community, is to educate children, to have a curiosity for learning, a love of learning, and give them the skills that they can develop themselves to be what they want to be. And a lot of those inspiration and sparks to try to figure out what they want to be when they grow up happens in K through 12 education, and I think that's great. I'd, I'd give an example from when I drove the school bus. There was a student who was really struggling. He had been in and out of the Platt Valley Correctional Center, the, the juvenile correctional facility, and all he wanted to do was get out of school so that he could join the army. Well, he had a goal. And so I was trying to inspire him to do all he could to accomplish his goal. There are students that have lots of different ideas of what they want to do when they get out of school.
Okay, thank you very much. Carolyn Reed.
I don't think that PSD spends too much time getting kids ready for college, but the second part of the question, should we spend more time helping kids get, get ready to go to work? And I absolutely believe that we need to also prepare kids who want to go to work after school for work. And that might look like a tech ed program, that might look like I work and I go to school and at the end of five years, I become a journeyman plumber. That might mean that you become a professional driver. I come out of, out of the trades, I was a 20-year UPS driver and that was my career path and that's how, how I made a living and I made a very good living at it. And I think we need not to discourage kids from, from entering the workforce. I think we do need to encourage the kids who just want to take that path, they need to be shown that that is valuable as well.
Okay, thank you. The next question, we'll start with Susan Gatawski. And the Pooter School District seeks to educate every child every day. What do you think the school district's role is in making sure our English language learners and low-income students are receiving the same opportunities as their peers?
I think that we, that we need to be very careful about allocating enough funds so that students with special needs or with... I think that we, that we need to be very careful about allocating enough funds so that students with special needs or with language needs get the resources that they need. I, I, you know, looking at the, at the English-language learners, one of the things that I, I think that we don't have enough of is role models for, for those students. And I would, I would advocate to get more role models for, for those students. But I think it's a, it's a matter of identifying what their needs are in terms of academics, but also in terms of where they are at home and, and the difficulties that they, that they face in terms, and bring with them to the classroom.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Prusnik.
Yeah, I touched on the low-income aspect of that a little bit earlier. You know, some of our schools are in poorer neighborhoods. They have single parents, and they have two working parents. They don't have time for parents to volunteer in the classroom. They're, they don't have time to donate. They don't work for companies that make donations to the schools, but our children in the more affluent neighborhoods do. And one of the things we need to look at is how can we create a leveling across that aspect and make sure that those things are happening? From the English-language learner perspective, you know, some of the studies that I've been reading say we do a real good job in elementary school. But what happens is, is kids go into middle school and high school, we start to lose them because they're not speaking English at the home, and so they're not speaking as much English. And the school system is set up for people who speak English all the time. But we really got to look at the specifics of what cases we have here in this district and not just rely on the generalities. But we have to look at options such as bilingual education earlier in the years and so forth. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Kathy Kip.
Well, there's two parts to that question. Let's address ELL first, English-language learners. So we did determine in our district with our new person who's in charge of that area that the funding, which was done through student-based budgeting previously, prior to this year, because some schools might have, you know, two kids, and some schools might have 20 kids, the principals actually just said, can you take this part of the pie back and manage it from the district? So that we are attempting this year to try and allocate those resources more equitably among the schools. As far as our at-risk or low-income children, really equity is what is needed. And, and equity is not necessarily an equal amount, right? Because different kids come from different places. Equity is what is going to narrow what we call the opportunity or achievement gap for all kids. We want all kids to have the same opportunity to succeed.
Thank you. Mr. Donovan.
Yes, I agree with what Kathy said. And as a school bus driver, I saw, I talked with parents, and I talked with students, and I saw the face of, and the, and the challenges that students experiencing poverty have in just getting breakfast in the morning, or not getting breakfast in the morning before school, and having to wait until they get to school. And so I'll always remember those Putnam Elementary kids, and the Lincoln Middle School kids, and the LeShur Middle School kids, and Harris, and Laurel. Because poverty is a great issue in this district and other districts. And allocating resources is going to be difficult when we've got those folks and the high achievers.
Thank you. Carolyn Reed.
Okay, I agree with Kathy that our ELL learners are, are getting support. I think studies have shown that it takes up to seven years for a child to master a new language. So I think that what we need to concentrate on is support for those kids over a longer period of time. And if that's a bilingual pro, school that, that they go to, to help them acquire the language, I think that's what we should support. And as far as our at-risk and our, our low-income students, I think that the district is doing an excellent job of helping with at-risk and low-income children. Like Nate was saying, we, we do provide food for the kids in the morning. We make sure that they have a good lunch. And I think that that's also something, though, that we can, need to continue to work on and identify areas maybe where we have not done so well.
Thank you. Mr. Pedersen.
Yes, I think the key for all students, including the ones referenced in the question, is about connecting kids with their future. Helping them to find their passions and to see a road to success from where they are to where they want to be, right? So, so I think we need to be thinking about that with our low socioeconomic kids, as well as our ELL kids and all other kids, right? Now, with respect to the, the, the particular groups of students that were referenced, we need to ensure that the schools have stability and strong principals and teachers where those students are a high percentage of the students in the school. And from the Board of Education point of view, we also need to ask the education professionals about what the best way is to address this, and then ensure that they have the funding to do it.
Thank you. Mr. Koschinski.
Thanks. I attend a church that helps Irish Elementary every year with their back-to-school program. We make dinner and feed those families. We participate in making backpacks full of school supplies, Project Smile, coats and boots. We work a lot with, and there are lots of organizations around town who work a lot with these north-end schools. And so I get to see these people myself. And it is an equity issue. They're not being treated fairly. The opt-out rate at Fort Collins High School for some of the high-stakes standardized tests was 60% last year. It was much, much lower at the north-end schools because those families are worried about life, they're worried about making ends meet, they have multiple jobs, they have a mortgage and health insurance and life problems. And we are not doing those students any help by making, by distracting them from their education with unnecessary testing.
Well, that leads right up into the next question. This will start with Kathy Kip. And this is simply, "Testing, what the heck?" And then in parentheses, "I could make a long-winded question, but I think that about covers it."
Okay, well, we'll try and get an answer. That covers it, too. There was definite testing overreach in our, in our state last year, I think our federal government too, but particularly our state. Our Board of Education, including myself, I went down and testified personally in front of the House Education Committee and the Senate Education Committee because our Board strongly believed that we needed to, we do need, to reduce the testing burden. We made a lot of progress last year. We've gone from two testing windows at the end of the year. I mean, what the heck was that all about, right? To one testing window. There's not going to be the senior-level tests this year. There was just a lot wrong last year. We've tried to improve the circumstances this year. There is no way to get rid of all of the testing. It's a federal thing, it's a state thing. Frankly, if you don't want to do the standardized test, you do always have the option to opt your child out.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Prusnik.
The standardized testing model we have right now, I believe, is broken. I'm 100% against it, except for the ACT and the SAT for college-bound students. And I have, for my entire career as a PSD parent, opted my children out of the test. And I would actually encourage everybody to opt out of the test as well. The number-one way that you can send a message to your state and federal officials that you are being overburdened is to elect not to participate in the program. I am a big fan of the MAPS-style testing, measures of aptitude performance. And these are testings that are actually designed to get your students' knowledge, find out what your students' level is. They can be administered multiple times through the year. They can be taken in a low-stress environment. And if you do it properly, you can roll the demographics up to the higher levels, eliminating the individual identifying information, which will reduce, address a number of privacy concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Nate Donovan.
Yes, as Kathy mentioned, there were changes in state law, and we hope there'll be changes in federal law to reduce the number and time spent on testing. I would say that certainly we need to reduce the emphasis, but testing is one way that we determine how our schools are doing in relationship to other schools and school districts. And I do not support opting out of tests. It's an option that parents have and students have. But I think it's ultimately not good for the schools, the teachers, the school district. And I think it sends a message to students that the rules don't apply to me, even though the state legislature has said, we have these number of tests. My parents and I can say, nope, I'm not going to do it. And I think it's important to test to a limited extent so that we know how our students are doing and that we can evaluate how they're doing.
Thank you. Carolyn Reed.
Thank you. I have to say that I really don't like the way tests have been administered. And I think it's very concerning that we take so much time away from instruction to do testing. However, that having been said, we do need a test that will tell us how we're doing, how our students are doing. So I support testing that is helpful in the aspect that it helps us know how our kids are progressing. I don't support high-stakes testing. And I would like to see most of our testing be end-of-course instead of high-stakes testing. I, I think that we do, like Nate said, need a way to figure out how we're doing against other school districts. And so some kind of a standardized test that all the school districts could agree on, I think would be best.
Thank you. Mr. Koschinski.
I, I'd like to take an opportunity to reiterate that this is a reason why we have to have someone on the school board who has children in the district. Because if next year, when Park and CMass hit the schools in April in all of their fury, and the community looks to the school board for answers, and not a single member of the school board has a child in those schools, there's going to be a problem. I have a sixth grader who is in the middle of all of this, and a second grader who I hope can avoid it. On the school board, I, I know everyone up here doesn't like the testing. It's time to do something about it. I think it's just super that the state and the federal government are still trying to work this out. In the meantime, the district needs to opt out, as other districts have done in the state of Colorado. It shouldn't be up to the parents. Of course, if they want to voluntarily take the test, they can. But I think the district needs to follow the lead of some of the other districts in Colorado and opt out as, as a whole district.
Mr. Pedersen.
Yeah, I disagree with Mr. Koschinski about this. I believe that there is value in some very limited amount of testing. I can tell you that as a parent, I wanted to understand where my student was at relative to other students in the state, relative to other students in the nation. Because in fact, my children and all of our students will be competing against those folks, and in fact, people around the world. So I don't support the amount of testing we have now. I think it needs to be cut back. I think it needs to be focused. But the idea that we just opt out and forget about standardized testing is not, I think, fair to the parents or the students. And frankly, it's not fair to the taxpayers who are spending, who we heard earlier, 70% of whom don't have kids in the schools. And they have a reasonable and legitimate reason to understand how our schools are doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Gatawski.
I always find it fascinating that so many people say that they don't want testing, but at the same time, they, they go to school view to find out how the schools are doing compared to one another. And so, you know, it's a bit of a problem. If you don't have testing, there's no way that you can have that. So that's something that we have to figure out, but it's a puzzlement to me. The other thing is that we need to have some way of measuring the growth of our students. And so perhaps in a standardized way, we, we could do that. We, though, as a board, have been advocating very, very heavily toward reducing the amount of testing, and in fact, have made some gains, to the point where we have limits on the number of sessions in the testing, the duration of the testing, and there's a lot more work to do. What I would love to see is, is regain more local control and to have more tests that are authentic assessments that are created here in the district. I also support the end-of-course testing, because one of the most frustrating things is to be giving a test to kids who have only partially completed the course. And so I think that if we give the end-of-course testing, we'll probably be getting a lot more legitimate results.
Okay, thank you. The next question, we'll start with Mr. Donovan. A current issue before the board is changing high school start times to no earlier than 8:30. Research has shown many educational health and so forth benefits. What is your opinion on this issue? And there's a related question about should we start the school term later in the year? So if you want to address starting earlier, or starting later in the day, and also starting the terms later. So we'll start with Mr. Donovan.
I think we should have a broader conversation about that possibility of starting, especially high school, later. We did, I did attend a school board retreat last night, and that issue was discussed. There are significant costs that would be, need to, need to be spent in order to do that. And a big portion of that is, there was an estimate of buying 40 more buses to take high school students later. And we already don't have enough school bus drivers in the district. We're scrambling to get school bus drivers. So I think we ought to have a broader conversation than just a couple of nights about it. But I think there are lots of issues that need to be worked out before we ever get close to thinking about a later start for high school students.
Thank you. Carolyn Reed.
I have to agree that the studies do show that high school students will do better when they start later. I don't think that any of us up here, I don't dispute that fact. I agree that, that they would do better if they started later. However, like Nate indicated, in order for us to do that, there would be significant expense to the school district, almost prohibitive. But maybe there are some other ways that we can look at this. Maybe that means starting grade schoolers earlier and moving the high schoolers later. I don't know what the answer is. I, I think that the school district needs to continue to work and look at that. But there are significant costs involved in that that could be quite prohibitive. And then as far as the kids starting later in the year, is that what the second question was?
I guess there was a poll or something. Yeah, I think that's what the question was about. Should we start later?
There, this year, there was an adjustment to the schedule, and we did start, I think, a couple or three days later. So there was an adjustment this year to the schedule to start a little bit later for heat purposes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Pedersen.
Yeah, I also attended the school board retreat last night. And the expenses that are being discussed here are related to one option to approach later start time for high school students. I think there are other ones. And I do think, from a biology perspective, it is important to recognize the needs of those students and where, and the timing that will best support their success. So I definitely support the idea of investigating this thing further. I think we need to have a community discussion about this, including educating the community on all the expenses, the pros and cons and whatnot. And I think that will take some, that will take some time. I believe it's not in our best interest to go very far with this at this moment, because we will need to ask the community for bond support next year in order to build new schools to handle all of our additional students. And frankly, systems such as the school district and communities need to be able to focus on one or a few important issues at a time. And I think that if we put the late school start into the same discussion, it would be confusing, and we might put the bond at risk, which I think we cannot do. So I support it, but over time investigation.
Thank you. Mr. Koschinski.
I know who you're talking to. I think if the school district does not want to go to later start times, then they should hire a security resource officer to come to my house and wake up my 11-year-old every morning at 6:15. It's getting harder and harder for my wife and I to wake that poor boy up. All seriousness, though. It is something that should be considered. I work in healthcare, and every time I go to one of our clinics, there are 60 providers who are all too eager to talk to me about the science of the teenage brain. And so I might be out of work if I don't talk about this a little bit. There, there is some science behind it. I think it is something that should be reviewed. I think this is another example of the community requesting that the school board take action and do something. And I think the school board should respond to that. And I think the school board should respond to that and research it. And I don't see any reason to wait.
Thank you. Susan Gatawski?
Well, in fact, according to our retreat last night, we did research it, and it does come down to money. And a lot of money, as Nate said, and as Carolyn said, prohibitively. I think the good news about this is that a number of us do believe that the studies are true, and that there is definitely a need for late start for teenagers. And so the conversation has begun. As some of you know, sometimes conversations take a long time. What worries me is trying to put late start up against growth. And the kids are coming, and the growth is going to be phenomenal. And we do have a growth plan. And I think I would like, as a board member, to focus our efforts and our financial wherewithal to the growth and keep talking about the late start.
Thank you. We'll start with Mr. Proznick.
Yeah, I agree with the scientific data on the biology aspect of it. It is very strong and very supportive. But the Pooter School District is part of the system of our community. And we have to look at it from that point of view as well. And if we move this time around, it has a big impact on preschool activities or before-school activities, after-school activities, siblings. And there's this huge thing that goes on there. And so are we going to benefit some students, say, one percent, by the start time? And then in other areas, hurt them by five or ten percent? We need to understand this whole picture that goes on there and not just look at this issue in isolation. And in particular, I have two students that went through the system, or one of them is still going through the system. And one of them loved to get up early and get off to school, and the other struggles to get up early. But looking back over their grades, they both had solid As in their first-period class of the day. So it is possible for kids to perform well in this. And the question is, should the district have a mandate that applies to everyone? Or should be looking for a solution that's more flexible and lets every student meet their needs? Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Kip?
Frankly, this is something I've been advocating for, for a long time, since before I was on the board, because it is a matter of student biology. I have two seniors right now, and mornings are not good. Mornings are hard for them in their first-period classes. I went to back-to-school night, and one of the teachers was like, "School shouldn't start at 7:30 in the morning." And I mean, I didn't know if it was because I was in there, but I hear this all the time. And it is, I think, a concern of many people in the community, and I believe as a school board, we need to address it. I believe there are other ways to address it than other than the whole buying more buses. That just merely decouples the high school issue from the rest of the district. I believe we could flip the elementary and high school start times so that you have the younger kids, whose brains are early, active that early in the morning, start earlier. The buildings would be cool earlier in the morning as well. Smart, huh? And then we would have the secondary kids awake for their first period.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll start the next question with Carolyn Reed. And it is, who should make decisions on curriculum and textbook purchases?
Well, right now, the board votes on that, and we do that with input from the staff. So currently, the staff researches the curriculum and textbook purchases. They make recommendations to us and provide us with all the information and the studies. And when I say staff, this also involves the advisory committees as well. It involves parents. And so I'm supportive of keeping our selection of curriculum and of textbooks the same as it is right now, with input and collaboration from all the stakeholders.
Thank you. Mr. Koschinski?
This is anecdotal, so it's just a quick story, but I think there's an element of truth to it. The math teacher at my daughter's elementary school told me a story about how, a few years ago, they got a new math curriculum. They showed up in all the teachers' inbox. And it was wrapped up in nice shiny paper, and they all threw it away, because there was no teacher input involved in the curriculum decision at all. The district has a procurement officers, curriculum advisors, lots of people who reviewed the curriculum, who thought this was a good thing for the district to purchase, but never asked for the teachers' feedback on that. And so that was just an enormous waste of money. That's one story. I know it's true, because it came from the teacher's mouth. But I just wonder, I don't have a whole lot of insight into that procurement decision, but I wonder if there's not enough teacher input involved in those curriculum decisions. That's where I think local control is most valuable, when the teachers and the principals at our schools are the ones making the decisions and not a procurement officer at the district.
Thank you very much. Mr. Pedersen?
I am shocked by what Gavin just said. I have been on two textbook adoptions, and there have been teachers involved in each of them. And I know the people who are involved in this at the district level. And there are always teachers and parents and community members that get involved in these things. So I agree with what was said earlier, that the process that we have is a good one. I think that it is important to get community input on the textbook adoptions and curriculum adoptions. And there are times, in fact, in fact, with all curriculum adoptions, they put the textbooks out to the schools and out to the, in more public settings, to get community feedback. I also think the Board of Education ought to continue to vote on such expenditures and such adoptions as a reflection of the community values. I also want to, I would want to make sure, from a board point of view, that there is sufficient professional development to ensure that the curriculum and/or textbooks are sufficiently, that there's sufficient professional development for the teachers and educators to be able to use them effectively.
Thank you. Susan Gatawski?
I would agree with Rob. It's, there is a tremendous amount of input that goes into the selection of our textbooks. Like anything else that we try and do, we try and have a great deal of transparency. We try to have a great deal of collaboration and input from our stakeholders. And there is an excellent process in place, to the point where the books are out for great lengths of time. Anybody who wants to come and see them, from the community, to the teachers, to administrators, to board members, you know, we have a responsibility also to look at those and evaluate the textbooks and the supplementary materials. By the time that recommendation comes to us, oh, by the way, then the companies are invited to come and present. So it's a ponderous process. So by the time the school board gets the recommendation for a particular textbook and the curriculum and the supplementary materials, they've been thoroughly vetted, and then we have the opportunity to vote on it.
Thank you. Kathy Kip?
Thank you. And well, first of all, it's not just an option. It is our job. It is state law that we have to approve these curriculums for the school. And it's not, the decision is not made by a procurement officer. I'm sorry if some teacher was misinformed and did not understand the process, but we do have a process. And our board is very particular about it. One of the things I always go through and look for when we get the memo describing the process is what the process was and who was involved on the committee. There are always administrators, teachers from throughout the district, parents, community members. And that's what I look for. I look for a broad-based approval system. I look for the chance that the, that the community had the opportunity to review the materials and provide feedback. And I would recommend that you do that. Next time there's an adoption, when we have one, I think pretty much every year, take a gander at the materials and see if you like what our kids are being taught.
Thank you. Mike Proznick?
Approving the decision can come in two ways. It can come up, come with a top-down management style, where the administrators tell people what they're going to use. It can be a bottoms-up model, or what's now being called a new power model. And in my professional life, I use the new power model in terms of management. And I would apply this answer to, you know, most board decisions, not even in just restricted to books. But we need to be having the people at the bottom, the teachers, the parents, the students, really making that recommendation. And if for some reason, as a board, we can't support that recommendation, we take our blocking reasons back to them, and we try to figure out if we can get past that or not, and see where we can go from there. But it, you know, we really have to go from the bottom up in almost everything the school district does. Thank you.
Thank you. Nate Donovan?
Yes, I appreciate Rob Pedersen's response. As someone who's been involved in textbook adoptions and explaining the process, and several other people have spoken to that process. And I would think, as far as the anecdote that was presented, that may be true. But I think as board members, we're going to learn quickly that there's about four sides to every story. And if we take the word or the perception or whatever of someone that has had a particular experience and use that as a driver to decisions on the school board, I think that's where we get into trouble. And I think this question somewhat goes to what I believe happened in the Douglas County School District, where the school board was disagreeing about the U.S. history curriculum, and it turned into a big protest and walkouts by students, and there was a lot of trauma there. So I hope that we maintain, as a school board and a school district, collaboration and cooperation.
Thank you. This will be the last question, and then we'll move on to your closing statements. Do you agree or disagree with the current path of the Pooter School District School Board? And please explain. And we will start with Mr. Pedersen.
Yes, I assume that what is meant by that is the system called policy governance, wherein the ends or goals of the district are developed and monitored by the Board of Education. And the means or mechanisms by which those ends and policies are, board policies are carried out, are handled by the superintendent, and in this case, her staff and the rest of the district staff. And so if that's the, if that's what the question is about, I do support that. I think it's a, it's a very good model. It clearly delineates the responsibilities. And it allows, frankly, the board also the discretion to dive deeper if that becomes necessary. For example, when there was discussion of closing a school some years ago, the board decided, even though that that's a means, the board decided that it was so important to the community that they would make the decision about that, not the superintendent. So I think in extraordinary circumstances like that, it is absolutely fair for the board to get involved in that level of detail. But mostly, it's about the goals and monitoring the goals.
Thank you. Mr. Koschinski?
I had a coffee with the architect of the policy governance in PSD, and this person called it their greatest failure in the two terms they had on the school board. So I don't think it's a good idea, but I don't even pretend to think that that's what the questioner was talking about. I think the direction of our schools is amazing. I see it in my kids' classrooms. I see it in their teachers. I see it in their principals. These are dedicated educators that we have in our district, and we should be very, very proud of them. I think our district, however, needs help. I think it needs a voice of the community, and I think it needs someone with some finance expertise on the board.
Thank you. Susan Gatawski?
Well, I'm assuming, as Rob did, that the direction of the, of the board is the way that we govern ourselves, which is policy governance. And I, being new to the board, policy governance was already there. I do know what the board was like before policy governance, and it's a completely different way of operating as a board. One of the things that I, that I really appreciate about the way that the board conducts its business is that we have our superintendent, who is our CEO, and we monitor her as the person who delves into the means. We set the goals. We don't monitor details. We simply monitor, no, I shouldn't say simply, but we monitor the outcomes. And it keeps us away from, you know, from, from being a means person rather than, than monitoring the goals. And I just feel that we are a better board for that.
Thank you. Mike Proznick?
Yeah, I'm a big supporter of policy governance. I've sat on a number of leadership teams on community organizations, currently vice-chair of the city's parking board, currently a member of my HOA board. And as I look at the different management styles that can go around, policy governance is definitely a good way for a board like this to operate. It also makes us more hands-off. It gets more control at the lower issues. And we should be involved at the policy issues. And if we are having problems, it's because we have the wrong policies, and we need to review that, and we need to fix and update our policies. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Kip?
I believe, as a former board member who's sitting in this room, said, "We don't want policy governance. We want good governance." And that good governance means that we, as a board, have taken policy governance and tweaked it into what we think is an effective working model for our board. But in terms of the current path of the board, I'm going to interpret that a little bit differently. I think we have done an excellent job in hiring a new superintendent who listens to our community, who reaches out to community organizations and is willing to have partnerships. I think that our board has developed amazing visionary new district ends, which are our goals for our students. I believe our board has done a phenomenal job of continuing to reach out and do community engagement on a regular basis. I believe that we do good advocacy work down at the state capitol and in Washington with our federal representatives. And I believe that a good board needs to be ready to tackle the next issue, which is growth, and making sure that we have buildings to put our growing population of students into.
Thank you. Nate Donovan?
I think the direction, the current path of the Pooter School District is a good one. I think we're on our way to continuing quality education in the Pooter School District. I think there are many processes in place to adopt best practices in the district. And I think, I agree with Kathy about, I think the board's primary job is to hire and delegate all of these responsibilities to the superintendent, who then delegates responsibilities to all the teachers. And I think it's important for board members to stay clear about what their job is. It's the longer-term vision and policy focus, and trying to translate community values into how we educate our students. And then let the professionals and the bus drivers and the custodians and the cafeteria workers, who are all educators, do the jobs that we hire them to do.
Thank you very much. Now you'll each have one minute, one last minute, to convince the voters to vote for you. And we're, oh, sorry, Carolyn Reed. I'm sorry. Carolyn Reed will answer that last question.
Thank you. So I am thinking I'm going to interpret this a little bit different, too. I don't know if people were really asking about our policy governance so much as they were asking about if the current path we're on is a good one. And I think that if you look around, you can see that Pooter School District has great schools. We have a green ribbon school. We have a lot of other very high-performing schools. And so I do think that we are on a good path, and I do support that current path. We have great teachers. We have great relationships with our teachers and our staff. But at the same time, we're always continuing to strive for improvement. So while things might be good, and things might even be great, we understand that they can always be better. And so that, that is the path that we're on right now. Thanks.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, now it's the time for closing statements, and we're going to start with Susan Gatawski. You'll have one last minute to convince voters to vote for you.
Please vote for me. There's, no, you want more. You want more. We live in an incredible community. We have an excellent school district. And it's not just what the board has done over the last four years with me on it. It's been a lot of years in the making. The key thing is that we continue to move forward, and we continue, I mean, great things are happening in PSD, and we need to continue it. I believe, as personally, that I bring two important things, and that is the experience of four years on the board. It's enabled me to see the big picture, as opposed to the classroom that I was in, the four walls. But the other thing is I bring that experience from the classroom. And I think, as I calculated, I will be the only K through twelve educator on the board, now that we are term-limiting our other two classroom teachers. So please vote for me.
Okay, thank you. We're going to move over to the left, so Mr. Pedersen?
Yes, I want to take a couple of moments to address this assertion that it's critical to have a parent of current students on the board. I have thirteen years of experience in volunteering in this school district. I've been an advocate for all students during that time. In fact, most of the volunteer service In fact, most of the volunteer service that I have done has not had anything to do with my kids or benefited them in any particular way. So, I believe that I can be and am an advocate for all students. I also, with that 13 years of experience, have quite a lot of understanding about what goes on the district, what it means to run the district as a system rather, and I have relationships with educators and parents of all ages that help me to understand where the community is at and help me to understand the truth of what is happening in the district. In general, I want to ensure that we have good partnerships with parents and that the board works collaboratively and honors all of our teachers, principals, and other staff in order to build on our great district and to help students find their passion and ensure their success in life. And I would ask your vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Kusinski.
Last week, at a student forum at Rocky Mountain High School, one of the students reminded me of a quote from Albert Einstein. She said, "Don't judge a fish on its ability to climb a tree." And that has stuck with me ever since. Since I was just brought up, I think I should point out that the school board has and will have a retired teacher. Sue Gatawski's experience is invaluable. Nate Donovan, who's guaranteed a seat, also has a ton of experience with the school district. Kathy Kip, if she's re-elected, has just as much experience. I also have eight years of experience with my own children in their classroom. I think what the board needs is something new. We have lots of people and lots of experience on the board, but what we don't have is a finance professional and what we won't have is someone who has kids in the district. And that is important and I don't think it should be diminished. Thanks.
Thank you. Carolyn Reed.
Thank you. PSD is a very high-performing district that has great teachers and a great staff and every day, our staff and our teachers are creating success stories. However, the funding that the district is receiving is, is not keeping up with the needs of our children. And if, and I, I'm going to be re-elected since I'm, I'm running unopposed, but I want to let you know that my goal is to work with our state legislators to make sure that schools are fully funded and that our kids have the resources that they need to succeed, just like my daughter got extra help when she was in grade school so that she could go on to have a successful career. I want to make sure that all of our students have access to those services and those services cost money. And so, I want to make sure that, that we work with the state legislators to make sure we have adequate funding.
Thank you. Nate Donovan.
Since my family and I moved to Fort Collins in 1997, we've grown to love this community. And I feel like I've got background and experience that I can bring to serving on the school board and I want to make a contribution. Since we had a quote from Albert Einstein, I'll quote Aristotle. There's an inscription above one of the entrances to the Nebraska State Capitol that says, "Political society exists for the sake of noble living." And politics is part of how we get things done. It's how we agree on what we're going to have for dinner. It's how we agree on how we're going to educate our children in our community. And I bring a background of an inside knowledge of the district, a lot of conflict resolution skills. I think I have the ability to look at a situation and listen, listen to all the input and then look at options, help frame the issues and help come to a decision on where we should go moving forward. And so, I look forward to serving on the school board. I'm running unopposed and I would appreciate your vote.
Thank you very much. Mr. Prusnik.
One of the most important characteristics of an affected, of an effective, effective board is diversity of viewpoints so that issues can be fully analyzed. Your current board has seven very qualified members on it. There are seven very qualified candidates up here today. No matter who you vote for, you will be voting for a quality person. But the real question to be asking is, which candidates bring the most diversity of viewpoint to the board so that the community is most representative? And I believe that I offer more diversity of viewpoint than Kathy does for the issues that will be facing us the next four years. I would like to, you know, I didn't finish my last success at the end of the thing and I'd like to talk about that one, which is the incumbents, the people who are here, have had access to the fair campaign training for up to eight years in some cases. And yet, it was earlier this month when I took my training that I found that a particular thing had been overlooked at the district. And I made my complaint and within 24 hours, that was fixed. So, I have the ability to show the data that will make the positive changes for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Kip.
Thank you. I believe that I've been on the board for the last four years and I believe the school district is better for it. I think that we have done, as a board, a very effective job of taking a large view of the district and a broad view. We don't look just at our own personal children in the school district. That's why we have committees and boards that have a variety of stakeholders on it. We like to consider the input of our internal stakeholders, which are our employees, as well as our external stakeholders, our community members and our parents. Without this, we do not have a complete picture of what we do. So, that is why we, as a board, take our role as listening to the community and bearing a reflection of our community very seriously, along with our role of advocacy and making sure that we go down to the state Capitol and to the federal Capitol and advocate to create the best possible conditions in which to educate our children. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to thank each candidate for joining us tonight and sharing their vision for how they'd like to serve their community on the Pooter School Board of Education. We at the League believe that voting is an honor, a privilege, and a responsibility. We urge you all to vote. Thank you for watching the forum and good night.